Thank you for patiently waiting as we return to open session. So the first thing on our agenda is we will have an action on the minutes, and we have three that we're gonna be voting on. So I will entertain a motion on the action on the executive session minutes of December 7th, 2016. Vote to approve and retain.
So Mrs. J, I move that we approve the, approve and retain the executive session minutes of December 7th, 2016.
Second, second, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. I will now entertain a motion on the open meeting minutes of January 4th. Just simple votes to approve.
I move we approve the minutes of the meeting of January 4th, 2017.
Any changes in comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. And we have one final action on the executive session minutes of January 4th, 2017. Vote to approve and retain.
Sure. Keep my streak going. I will move that we approve and retain the executive session minutes of the meeting of January 4th, 2017.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Passes unanimously. We will move on to new business. And we have the opportunity to ratify an agreement with the Northborough Teachers Association. This is very, very good news. This is the third of the three in the
That's right.
District, so
Three for three.
We're very happy. Do you want to say anything first, or?
I just that this has been an amazing process and an opportunity to engage in productive, active dialogue with the Northborough Teachers Association. It reflects a culmination of a lot of time on the part of our teachers and Central Office in bringing the collective bargaining process to a happy conclusion this evening with the ratification vote. And the association voted this afternoon. I want to extend a professional and personal thank you and note of gratitude and appreciation to the bargaining association. Peter Rolson, who is the president, is sitting in the audience, and the amount of time these folks dedicated to bring this process to a very collaborative close is considerable. So I also want to thank the principals for their work in having the opportunity to engage in lots of conversations about language and practice and all those types of things that go into a successful bargaining process. To Cheryl, to Greg, to Becky, all at Central Office for providing the support and the the behind the scenes information that's important when you come to the table to negotiate. So very proud to be a part of this collaborative team and very proud of our teachers in this process.
Thank you. So without further ado, I will entertain a motion.
Alright, Mr. Chair, I move that the Northborough School Committee ratify the agreement between the Northborough Teachers Association and the Northborough School Committee dated 2017 through 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, would like to thank the parties involved for their hard work on this agreement. And I also just want to say that having personally been last year been laid off from a position, having my husband been laid off from a position, it's a very stressful event. And we can't predict the future and I, we can't make any promises in regards to what is gonna happen in the future. But the new reduction in force language in this contract, along with the teachers' willingness to agree to this contract, which is making it feasible, that we're not anticipating any layoffs for any teachers in the district. I think that what you've done for all of your teachers in this to give some kind of a stability and some feeling of ease that I think, I can't applaud you enough. And having gone through it, I can just say that you've done a great thing for your teachers. It's really a wonderful thing that you've been able to make this agreement so that you are probably sparing hardship that would have happened if it had gone the other way and a different increase had been insisted upon. I just wanted to thank everybody again and tell you how great I think it is that this, that this agreement is going into play and I support it wholeheartedly.
Anyone else? Well, this is a roll call vote, so all those in favor?
Yes.
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 And yes. So congratulations. And we look forward to another three years of wonderful teaching
Mm-hmm.
at the K-8. So again, please pass our congratulations on to the association. Excellent. And now we have a couple more things under new business. We have some more grants and donations and as we are getting near budget season, we always like when people donate to the district for the betterment of the K-8, so I'll let Christine lead off with these two.
Well, it's nice when we can call a meeting together and it's all good news. And I think the folks that are most appropriate to address each one of these grants would be the principals. You know that in many cases, there's some identification of how the funds are to be used and the principals always appreciate the donations and really apply whatever funding or resources that are provided through this in the most meaningful way at the school level. So again, we have a Z-School donation from Bill Fitzgerald in the amount of $250. And before we vote to hopefully accept, Sue, I'm not sure if you, Principal Whitten?
Sure. Bill and Christine Fitzgerald are ardent supporters of the Northborough Public Schools on lots of different levels. And this year, instead of some of their humorous holiday gifts that they've sent to staff in the past, as much as they know that we were entertained by those, chose to make a donation of a Chromebook to our school for the purpose of using the Chromebook within one of our learning centers. So the $250 was earmarked for Chromebook for special education students, which is greatly, greatly appreciated. I hope that you'll approve that grant.
Okay.
Give. I move that we accept the grant of $250 from Bill and Christine Fitzgerald as a donation to the Z-School. And I also would add to that that we approve this along with the request that our thanks are given to them for this donation.
Seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor? Again, please convey our thanks to Bill and Christine, Italy. So.
And the next grant award, in the form of a grant, is to Proctor School, and I think this was an interesting collaboration. Support from the Staples Foundation through the Proctor PTO.
Yes. So we're very fortunate.
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes.
So we have a very active parent community at Proctor. One of our parents, April Simorelli, works for Staples, and employees at Staples can nominate schools for grants, and April did that for us. So a collaboration was done with myself and Lee Welch in our PTO. We put together a grant proposal for additions to our Makerspace that we already have at Proctor and want to start an after-school Makerspace Club. And we're gonna pilot that this spring. So with the funds, when they become available, we're gonna purchase a 3D printer for Proctor with the necessary filaments that'll keep us in business for a long time. We're also gonna purchase a couple additional Chromebooks that'll be marked just for the 3D printer. We're gonna set that up in a nice cart space so that we can use Tinkercad with that, which will be the design and creative problem-solving process that will then feed into what comes out of that 3D printer. And if there's any funds left, which we think we might have a little bit, we're gonna, we're looking at either Cot Osmos or the Duplo engineering sets for our younger population of students. So just waiting to see how it all plays out, but definitely the 3D printer and the Chromebooks that will go along with that. So we're very excited to get this project up and running in the spring.
Wonderful.
I move that we accept the Proctor School grant for $3,500 from the Staples Foundation.
Second.
Any comments?
Sounds wonderful.
Yes, it does.
And again, thank the members of the PTO and April as well for their pulling together of a grant. I know that can be a lot of hard work to pull that all together and extend our thanks to them.
Absolutely. I will. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All those in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Find it awesome that, well, back when I was looking at schools, you know, CAD was kinda new and used to be, you know, drafting with a pencil and a slide rule. And now it's down at the K-5 level, for crying out loud. So it's amazing how the technology has transitioned younger and younger. And those skill sets, those are actually the skills, the STEM skills that are needed in this economy. So again, I applaud all four of the schools and certainly at Malacan for giving kids the opportunity to have exposure to this type of technology as quickly as possible. So I may need to hire one at some point, so keep them involved in that.
They'll be teaching all of us.
They will. I don't run the CAD stuff. I just have it done. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to old business, and we have none, apparently. So we will move on to the report to the committee on budgets.
Right. In your packet this evening is the monthly expenditure report dated as of January 31st. And as always, we would request that there be a vote to approve until audited. A couple noteworthy updates. We have addressed this in prior meetings and shared that we are very mindful of the special ed budget portion of the appropriated amount. And we, as always, continue to monitor these expenditures very closely. As we noted before, we did have an above-budget increase in student need, which is reflected in the increase in the special ed portion of this budget. However, there is some good news, and Cheryl can speak more specifically to this. Each and every January, we're hopeful that the Department of Elementary announces that there is some extraordinary special ed funds that have been released. And we find ourselves in the same situation this year, happily so. Generally, there's a time element and those requests for funds would be submitted in March, and they would be expended in this fiscal year by June 30th. And those funds are used then to offset costs in this budget cycle. So there is, we're very optimistic that we will be eligible in Northborough for extraordinary relief through this process. And again, as things change, we are still fairly early in fully expending this budget. So I thought it was important to make note of that because obviously that is represented in this expenditure report.
But there are no significant variances in the budget beyond that, okay?
No, we've already discussed in prior conversations. But it's good to know the extraordinary funding is eligible to be applied for, and each year when that is released, we usually do qualify. We won't know until the documents are completed.
Right. The month of March is when, is when the actual process takes place, and we're hoping to be able to get the the actual feedback, but we are well on our way to preparing ourselves.
Is that the circuit breaker funding or something?
It's extraordinary relief circuit.
Extraordinary.
Yeah, regular circuit breaker, and then you have extraordinary funds that are released sometimes. And this year, once again, they were released. So we'll definitely update the committee as that moves forward.
I move we vote to approve the fiscal year 17 monthly general fund expenditure report until audited.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you.
The budget goals are available for distribution only, very much part of the budgeting process, as is the budget calendar. We did have a conversation with John Cudere today inquiring as to the date of the appropriations, the financial appropriations meeting. And right now, it's one of three possibilities. We don't have a final date, but we're hoping that that will take place somewhere between February 18th and March 4th. So it's either the 18th, the 25th, or the 4th. I'm not sure what the availability of the committee might be, so if there's a particular date that you know that you would not be available, if you know that, please let me know, or if you know it now, I'd be happy to make note of that.
I will not be available the 18th, but I will be available the other two days.
Okay.
Is it March? 18th, 25th, or 4th?
February.
February 18th.
18th, 25th, or March 4th? March 4th. Okay.
Yeah, not the 18th. But the other ones, I don't know.
We're pretty much unanimous that the 18th is valid.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright.
Then we get to enrollments.
And the enrollments are in your packet. When we talked about this last month, of course, kindergarten enrollment registration was still taking place. And I had mentioned at the time that the numbers, the projections for FY18 had the potential to cap certain grades and certain classes in each of our schools. And we are in the process of identifying those caps. We have a number of classes that grades in each of our schools that we're being very watchful over. And I plan to post these on the website because there are a number of sections already that, for the most part, we're projecting will be closed. We've already enrolled a few newcomers, if you will, possible students for FY18 through Central Office. And just as we implemented a very successful practice in June of last year, when we finalized the policy and shared that with the community, we are implementing the same practice with a few tweaks that we learned from going around the first time with this new policy implementation. So we are having folks come to, new to the community, come to Central Office to register. We will start that waitlist between now and August. There are many changes that occur in each of our schools. We have folks moving into the district, but we also have folks moving out, and we absolutely talked a lot about that last year with the number of individuals, 58 in Malacan's 62 that were registered over the summer. But we also had folks moving in and out. So we're going to keep a watch on that. We've already started. And again, rather than share each section tonight, I think it might just be easier to post them on the website and to share that out. We've had conversations, we met this week, to go through each grade at every school and identify those. I can certainly share what our findings are now, if you'd like, just for information. So at Lincoln Street, we are anticipating, as of today, that full-day K, grades one and two are at cap. At Peaslee, full-day K and grades one, three, and five are potentially at cap. Proctor School, grade five is potentially at cap. Z, grades one and two are at cap. And, I'm sorry, for next year, grades one, I just caught Sue's eye. She said you missed one. For next year, it's grades one, two, and four are at cap. Malacan is not capped. She just opens those doors.
No vacancy.
You're one and done with one middle school.
Well, you're gonna be graduating that big class, so that's gonna free up all sorts of room for it.
Right. You bet. So we're seeing fluctuations in enrollments as well, but again, it's a little bit early to say definitely what those sections are gonna look like. We also have folks that are moving into the community now. And we have a cap at Peaslee School for full-day K. So what we are doing is doing, implementing the same process as we did last year over the summer. Because we want to be true, as we've talked about to our class size policy, when folks are moving into the district now, in the FY17 school year, we are assigning them to a neighborhood school. That ensures what we've committed to do, which is continue to monitor that, those class sizes, which means now in FY17, and I'm gonna make sure I'm looking at this accurately, it is Peaslee at the kindergarten level and it's Z-School at grades one and two. So this information is shared. The principals do have it. And as such, it's a little bit too premature to identify whether we're gonna have a half-day K model yet or not. Even though we had registration dates, there are those registrations that come in after the fact. Last year, we had about the same number, Sue, I think, this time, and we saw an increase. And having that half-day kindergarten program last year really helped with the class sizes in the full-day model because a half-day student is still occupying a seat. And so we're gonna be watchful over that and hope by March we have a better view of what that might look like for next year. So again, I want to commend Nancy Bissett at Central for all of her due diligence on this and her wonderful customer service skills when the parents come into the district. I had someone compliment her today that actually went through the process last year and complimented how how she felt welcome and all of her information was provided and her questions answered. And again, to the principals for being watchful and mindful of those adjustments. It's a policy that keeps on giving benefits, I guess, as we move through.
Any comments? Any comments from the principals? About to put you on the spot.
No, I will reiterate the appreciation for the half-day kindergarten class. It has made the full-day program, I can speak to the full-day program at Z-School, a much more comprehensive program because they're not trying to front-load instruction so that half-day students can have every aspect of the curriculum. So it's made life very comfortable for our kindergarten students. So many thanks for putting that half-day class in place.
You're welcome. Alright, well, thank you. Alright, we have, again, in your packet, the fiscal year 18 capital plan draft.
Well, we have a revised
Revised.
since the packet was out at the last meeting, last month, when we presented the original draft. There was a request to hold off approving the draft plan until we had a clear indication whether the Proctor roof would be on this year's town warrant, and it will be. Mr. Cudere has confirmed that today. And so what you have is a revised capital plan for vote, and we've moved that Proctor roof to FY2018. Now that will get a vote for town.
Now, can I entertain a motion for, yeah.
So Alana's smiling, so that's good news for Proctor.
Mrs. Kress, would you like to move?
Yes.
Thank you.
It surprised me. I'm thrilled. I wholeheartedly make the move that we publicly vote to approve that and approve capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year 2023.
Dare I say, I've never had a more enthusiastic motion for a capital improvement program, but any further discussion? All those in favor? Please convey our thanks, obviously, to Mr. Cudere and everyone that decided to move this forward because that's a wonderful, it makes sense.
Yes, it definitely does. And I, again, I volunteer to make the motion at town meeting, and if I, if anyone at town meeting, I mean, if I'm needed to speak at town meeting in support of this, I will absolutely get up to the podium or to the microphone and support this because I wholeheartedly support this. I'm thrilled. It's great.
Next time. Thank you.
It's called raising the roof with enthusiasm.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. Alright, so budget presentation.
Yes. Last month, we presented the preliminary budget, and our projected increase at that time was 3.93%. We, I did mention during the presentation that there were still many variables that impact that final increase, and they are still in play. So this evening, we are still at the preliminary budget presentation state, and I have all I have great confidence that at our next meeting, we'll be moving forward with the recommended budget. There are still some staffing changes that have come in in the last day. We're anticipating perhaps more, and one change can impact the overall budget. At this point, all of the opportunities that we presented to address the needs of our students in many and varied ways are still present in the budget, so our hope is we're going to retain those. I know there've been some very energetic and enthusiastic conversations about the implementation of the therapeutic program that we talked about this year and our language-based program. We did have a meeting with Jerry Schultz, and he is the consultant that I referenced earlier. And so all of those things are coming into play and becoming a lot more clearer. And the preliminary budget as presented does provide support for all of those. And as well as making sure that the Metro West grant is expended exactly the way Michelle has dreamed and dreamt that it would be, and providing support through the budget as much as we are needed to, for, to make sure those are successful programs at their first launch. So again, great work from everyone's school and staff.
Alright.
Okay.
We'll move on to educational policy. We have none at this time, but we do have some first readings for policy. So in your packet, we have three.
We do have three, and they have been reviewed by council in all three cases. The first one, accidents and complaints in connection with pupil transportation, slight edit. You'll see that in red. So noted. And again, these are first reads. No action necessary tonight.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I don't have any comments on this one, but I do on J-300.
Sure.
Okay.
So we can, does anyone have any comments on either E-220 or I-140? Let's move to J-300 then.
So my concern on J-300 is the approval under fundraising at the top of page three, approval by the school committee is required before engaging students in fundraising activities for the trips. My concern is that, is that it might, I see that as too much of a burden to expect the students or their parents to come to us first and also to try to differentiate their funding. So for example, if Peaslee's trying to raise money for Nature's Classroom and they have a fifth-grade fundraiser, I don't want them to be burdened with trying to figure out which, which of that money they're raising is gonna go towards the overnight trip as opposed to perhaps yearbook or teamwork or another, I don't know if they do teamwork, or t-shirts or something else. I wouldn't want them to be burdened with having to break them out. So what is the reasoning behind, behind this adding this approval by the school committee is required? Why is this, why should this be required?
Which section you want?
The top of page three. So just
That.
A differentiation between general fundraising and then
It was included because it was part of what was reviewed at subcommittee that we wanted to add because it was in another, it was another part of one of the policies that we reviewed. It doesn't really change the context and the content of the policy in general, so it can come in or come out. I mean, it's just some language that we reviewed in subcommittee that was part of someone else's. I agree, I happen to agree with you that it's a cumbersome process when the approval is required before the fundraising begins because in most cases, a PTO starts raising funds for some activity very early in the school year. And that isn't necessarily identified funding for a purposeful reason at that point in time.
Keith?
Yeah, I mean, I follow what you're saying, Penny. I think that it was to prevent them from doing fundraisings for a specific trip, you know, just to, you know, prevent, you know, the potential harm, I guess, of, you know, getting excited about this thing and it's not approved yet, so maybe we could just we could either take it out or we could say it's, you know, not, not to do any specific fundraiser for a specific trip.
For a specific trip.
That's not yet, kind of.
And you could even add for a specific trip here.
Or something.
I think part of it, and maybe why this, this was pulled, this language was pulled in here, is at the high school level, if you're doing a trip to France, if you're doing a trip to Italy, where there is a specific trip, to your point, that you're gonna be fundraising for, they want to put the word out that the school committee, even though they might not sanction that trip, they do have to sanction any fundraising that's gonna be done on behalf of the trip, so. So I think that may be why that language is in there, why council wanted it. But I think you could get just in, um...
For a specific...
For, for specific trips, you know?
Right, this is not a council recommendation, this was an edit that was made.
Yeah, this is ours.
Right, this is our edit.
But I think the context of the conversation was to, for them to not fundraise for a trip that they don't know they're gonna be able to do, which is different from the statement that you're presenting.
And it has to be something specific. If it's just general fundraising, I don't think there's, obviously, there's no problem with that at all.
So with, with both comments in mind, I can think of an overnight trip, like our stone, sentimental trip. And that fundraising begins very early in the school year. And we not, we don't always approve it beforehand, so we might try removing it. And if it becomes a problem, we could always edit it later, edit the policy again because we do review them. I would feel more comfortable with it being removed.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, no.
It's great.
I, I think, you know, at that point, the educational leaders and teachers are making a, a, a decision about, you know, whether they should be engaging in those activities prior to approving.
And there's also a trip that we ratified, we sanctioned that trip before they go. So again, I see that sentence as pertaining more to a trip that we wouldn't be sanctioning, but we would have to sanction the fundraising for, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't occur here.
Yeah, I don't, I would, I don't see that occurring. And I, I see that, I, I see the concern there, but balancing it against the burden of changing the ways that we've done fundraising for Stone, fundraising for Nature's Classroom, and I wouldn't wanna have to put an extra step in place for that.
We can lose that sentence in the policy, this is fine.
Yeah, other than that, I'm, I'm in full agreement with the other changes for the carriers. And, you know, the conduct is, you know, common sense thing. That was my, my only concern with the policies as presented this evening.
Great, so these will be back as a second read next month. We have still a little time, if there's some thoughts.
Four weeks to chew on. And we have some reviewed policies that were distributed.
That's right, and these are just distribution only this evening, so this is good news when we have finalized a policy and they're edits, so this is to be added to...
Added to your binder.
Added to the binder, which is now virtual. If anyone's gone on the policy list, school committee policies. We've had some folks at Central putting an awful lot of time into reorganizing them and presenting them in a way that's much more manageable for the public to do, to find and to research our policies. So a big improvement on our website.
All right, well, and now we move on to audience sharing. We do have some members in the audience tonight. Mr. Olson.
It was a tough negotiation, wasn't it?
I was gonna say, you got kneecaps, wow, that's a hard one.
That's what I thought about getting old that I like, it's absolutely nothing. I, I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the bargaining process. I wanted to thank the teachers of, of Northborough for the input that they've had for, before we get started, especially the negotiations committee for the hard-working hours of day for them. I'd like to thank Superintendent Johnson, just a great person to work with, really understands the idea of interspace bargaining, a reflection of the school committee and how we're all really on the same page. We all want what's best for the town of Northborough and the kids that live here. Thank you so much for your heartfelt comments about the RIF language. It really helps me feel good about your coming from the same page. And it, it really does make me feel good as the association president to hear that you're with us. It also means you're all with us for the unanimous vote you gave us tonight. Thank you so much, and hopefully three years later, I'll...
Let's not rush that one, Penny.
Let's savor this one for a while. Anyone else in the audience? We will move to the principals.
So our writers' club starts tomorrow. It's gonna run from February through April, so we're gonna have a student-based newspaper that we're gonna work on. So in our May meeting, you'll be able to see a copy of that. So we're looking forward to getting that up and running starting tomorrow. We have ten students participating in grades three through five.
Well, it looks like Saturday's going to be sunny, a little cool, but it's sunny out. So I've left a little ad for you. Z School has, I think this is probably our fifth or sixth year, done a responsible electronics recycling event through the efforts of our environmental club. So I encourage you and anyone on the planet that you know that wants to recycle electronics to bring them to the Z School between the hours of nine and noon. The proceeds will be used by our environmental club. Right now, we're working to work out the details for the caterpillar lab to come to the Z School in May. So proceeds from this event will be used to provide our students with an opportunity to see all sorts of caterpillars, hear about the impact the environment and humans in the environment have on their growth and development, especially monarch butterflies, which are fast dwindling away. So please spread the word. We usually do well, we always go for the Saturday before the Super Bowl. So please let everyone that you know know about our event.
I'd like to extend a public thank you to Algonquin High School. We are in the midst of our Read-a-Thon, which we've held for many years. And each year, we struggle with, how do we wanna kick this thing off and get students excited to read? And this year, we reached out through our gym teacher, Trish Rollins, to Kara Ellis, the A.D. of the high school. And with her help and Coach Doherty's help, we had about twenty Algonquin athletes who came to Lincoln Street during our school day, right after theirs ended. With the help of our PTO, we purchased sports-themed books for each grade level. The athletes read the books to the students and answered their questions about, you know, why do you think reading is important and what is your sport all about? We had the boys' basketball team, lacrosse, hockey, cheerleaders, track and field. So we had a great representation of boys and girls, and our students were just thrilled. The high school students were so polite and accommodating, and the highlight was really with our fifth grade, who had a number of boys' basketball players with them in the gym. And then they, after reading the boys, did a demonstration of some of their fantastic skills for our students. And they called our students up and our students were able to do some shooting with them, and so were our teachers. And it was just a great way to make a connection within our community to the high school and make it, you know, a really nice contact with, with Coach Doherty. Before we even started reading that day, he offered to us that if our school made our goal of fifty-three thousand minutes for reading, that he would bring the athletes back to the school and they would do something special for us. So I don't know if we have to work the numbers or whatever, but we're gonna make sure that we get that because they were really awesome. So that was a great new event for us.
Wow, that's great to hear.
I just wanted to talk about an event that we had last week, last Wednesday. We had John Halligan come to visit. We, this is our third time that we have welcomed him. And he does a presentation for students about his son, who died by suicide. And the presentation for students is very hopeful. It's about love and resiliency, and it's also about bullying and how we treat one another. His son was bullied and ridiculed online and in person. And so it's, it's a, it's a nice way for us as a school community to come together and share a common experience, the students, the staff. And we've had him come, as I said, two other times, so every three years or so, the PTO sponsors this. And it gives us a common experience to refer to when students are struggling with mental health issues, suicidality, as well as how they treat one another. And that night, Wednesday night, we had a parent presentation. We partnered with Saint V's this year. They had John Halligan at their school the next day, but the parent night was a, was a collaboration. And we had over a hundred parents come, it was wonderful. The parent event is different, and the message to parents, while some of the themes are the same, the message more is around how we parent students with this, with the technology that they, that is in front of them and the stressors and the anxiety that kids feel. So it was a wonderful event, and from it, we have been able to help some students who are in some pretty serious struggles. I think that they were given permission to sort of talk about things. And we, we had a big impact on kids. We do follow-up activities after he leaves, and the student response has been amazing. So thank you to the PTO and the parents who were able to make it.
That's great, thank you. Anyone?
I went to the presentation.
I did as well.
And it was, it was amazing, and I'm so glad it was something that you were able to offer to parents. I'm glad there was such a good turnout because it was very informative. And as a parent, I found it extremely helpful. And I, I did see him when he was here four years ago, and it was absolutely worth coming back again for. And it was updated with, now that there's newer technology, and he, he reflected that. He had updated his presentation, he did an amazing job with it. And I'm very grateful and thankful that, that Malacan provided this for its, your students and, and staff and parents. Thank you.
All right, and we're getting to that time of year, not just the Super Bowl, but team trivia night. April the seventh, it'll be at the Doubletree Hotel in Westboro. So start thinking of your costumes, start brushing up on all that useless knowledge. And let's all see each other that Friday night and have a great time and raise money for the Northborough Foundation. So I'm looking forward to that. Anything else? I think we're good. So we will meet again in four weeks. So future agenda items, we will have a recommended budget to vote on and approve.
Yes, we will.
Plug the quiz note again, team trivia night, but we don't need to put that on. Do we have any other suggestions, anything? We will have some second readings. And, yes?
Motion adjourned.
Okay. Seconded, all right, any discussion? All those in favor? We are adjourned, have a great weekend.